Okay.
Business.
We're gonna call this Board of Selectmen Meeting to order for Thursday.
Okay.
Business.
We're gonna call this Board of Selectmen Meeting to order for Thursday, September 7th. Time is 7:03. All three selectmen present, town administrator present, town...
You say 7:03?
And secretary present.
You said 7:03?
7:03, ma'am.
Thank you.
Recording is Don Larson. Thank you, Don. And the first thing on the agenda, we're gonna talk about our minutes.
Want me to make a motion, Mike?
I would appreciate a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the August 24th regular meeting minutes.
Oh, second motion.
As written.
The only thing is, this one has draft, and I'm saying, can they make a pen and ink change of this?
Oh, they all say draft, don't they? Don't they say drafts subject to...
Yeah, okay, just, I just...
Then once we sign them, then...
They become official. Okay, no further discussion, all in favor?
Bob, did you second that?
Yes.
I'm running behind my, in my own brain today.
I even talk slow.
Do they say, they're not, they say draft after we sign them too?
Yeah, we all change them.
Okay.
It's me looking at my whole folder at home.
Okay, we'll move on to open up the public comment first. Don, anything for the group? Okay?
Yes, Patrick, now, one quick thing. Had a meeting the other night with the Town of Bow regarding Council of Hazardous Waste Day.
Yes.
The date is set for October 7th.
October 7th.
8:30 to 1 in Bow at the Bow Community Center where it's usually held.
October 7th?
Yes.
8:30 to 1?
Yes, at the Community Center of Bow. That's where we usually have it.
Okay.
We do it conjunction with Bow.
Yep.
And just one little thing to give you a heads up, the cost this year has gone up approximately 15%.
What is the cost of that, Woody?
It all depends on how much material is delivered, and there's a bunch of factors for again, how much the grant we...
So it's not free, really?
As a waste day, it's not free.
Now, we've had Dunbar residents I've seen working that along with them. How does that, how does that work?
Yes, we're, actually, that's the next thing. We're gonna be looking for some more volunteers. I have the regulars that I contact, but I don't like to always count on them.
Yep. Do any of your paid employees work there?
Typically, I'm the only one that goes over.
Okay.
I have 16 years, something like that.
Of doing it?
Yeah.
Okay. But I think it's a great thing.
Yep, it actually is, it gets a little carried out. We're gonna, we're already in the advertising process to get the word out.
Okay. We'll put it on the website, give it to Lean, she can put it as a Hot Topic thing?
It's already there.
Okay.
We're ahead of ya.
You are, kudos to you, kudos to you.
I just wanted to get that out there.
Okay, great, great.
Will you be there this year? Okay, he's on vacation this week.
He will be taking care of a lot of ponies out over there.
Okay.
Everything's in the works right now?
Yep.
But I like to try and get the information.
I've always found it well organized, and it's a great place to bring your paint.
Yes, as long as it's not latex.
Yeah. You can dry it out, it's supposed to...
Dry it out in the can, I forget.
Yeah, yeah, it's the oil-based and flammable, flammable and stuff like that.
Stains and...
Yeah. Okay. All right, thank you, anything else, Woody? Okay. All right, we'll close public comment, I'm gonna go right to the agenda. We have a guest here from the Midstate Regional Ride Resource Office or Community Action Program. It's Larissa Ruggerio.
Jovella Ruggerio. Thank you.
Okay. Welcome.
Thanks so much, if you don't mind, I'll stand for this...
That's fine.
For my presentation.
We also have it on tape, where a lot of residents do look at it on tape, so...
Smile.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. So I'll keep this as brief as possible, I'm sure your time is valuable. Thank you very much for having me here, giving me opportunity to speak with you and tell you a little bit about Midstate Regional Coordinating Council for Community Transportation. I printed the slides that I usually, you know, use for my presentation, and I'll go over them as well. So, again, my name is Larissa Jovella Ruggerio, I am with the Midstate RCC. I am hired by the Community Action Program, Belknap, Merrimack Counties, because CAP is the lead agency, or one of the lead agencies for the Midstate RCC. To tell you a little bit about myself, I originally come from Bosnia, this is what you'll probably figure out the accent is coming from. I've been here about 15 and a half years, and I've been doing this for about three and a half years. The purpose of my being here is basically to tell you about the RCC and as well as to encourage your collaboration with the RCC. Meaning, ask you to consider joining the RCC. I'll tell you a little bit more about that. I'm not here to ask for any funds or anything like that, I just, we would love to have you, you know, participate in regional transportation planning. So this is kind of my agenda, and I'll briefly go over this and focus mostly on number two and three, which is collaboration and coordination of efforts. And tell you a little bit about available transportation options that you have for your residents here, specifically for seniors who are 60 years and over and people with disabilities of any age. So the next slide tells us a little bit about the mission of the RCC, which is of course to improve mobility and access for all citizens by coordinating regional and local community transportation services and information and coordination efforts. And the Midstate RCC was created in 2000... You have your... Sorry. And the Midstate RCC was created in 2009 by the statewide coordinating council for community transportation that was enacted by the New Hampshire Legislature in 2007, and we have the RSA 239-B to witness to that creation. And in 2009, SCC, or the statewide coordinating council, created 10 regions and made our region, Region 3. Today, we have nine regions, because two regions southwest are... So it left us with nine regions.
That's Ken.
So in 2010, the SCC asked all the regions to create their own coordinated transit and human services transportation plan and which is basically used to identify transportation needs in each region. And they also asked that each region creates the Regional Ride Resource Directory, which you're having in your, in your hands. This directory gets updated annually and by me. I call every single of these places and make sure the information is correct. Of course, information changes frequently, so, you know, it may not be up to date at this point. And I may consider like doing that more frequently in the future. So this next slide tells about what the Midstate RCC is, about the borders. So it includes Belknap and Merrimack Counties, but excludes the Town of Cooksett and includes the towns of Deering Hillsborough and Windsor of Hillsborough County. The reason for these type of borders is because in 2009, when all this was being created, New Hampshire Medicaid was participating in the whole process, so it was based on kind of hospital catchment areas as opposed to just traditional county boundaries. The next slide tells about who the RCC is, and it's basically, at this moment, we have 32 members who are participating in planning and coordination of efforts. And membership is free, it doesn't cost anything. It does require anyone to sign a memorandum of understanding, which is a couple pages long, but it essentially just encourages your participation and, and your attendance whenever possible. I think it asks for 75% of attendance, but we have members who don't really even meet that criteria, so... And in the future, we're thinking about considering like go-to meetings for those people who can't make it, you know, so maybe that would be beneficial too for a lot of them. I left a copy of the memorandum of understanding in the folder here and for your review and consideration. And if you have any questions about that at any point, just let me know. You can also withdraw at any time, and I hope you will, once you join, if you decide to do it, that you won't be thinking about that. I've been doing these presentations, I have, we have 40 towns in our region, towns, cities, and this is my fourth since I've started doing this. So everybody's, all the presentations were well received, everybody's really interested in participating in this, so hopefully you will be too. The RCC meetings, we meet bimonthly, so it's really six meetings a year. And we alternate our meetings between Concord and the Lakes Region. The next meeting is on September 12th at 2 o'clock in Guilford at Wesley Woods. Anyone's welcome to attend, they don't have to be a member. So we have a variety of organizations participating, and we currently have Town of Tilton, Town of Hillsborough, and Town of Windsor, as well as the City of Concord being a member of the RCC. The next slide talks about a little bit, kind of just to tell you what my role is in all this. You know, they call me lots of different things, like from a moving, moving wheel that moves all these parts along and works with the RCC on implementation of goals and strategies, to a piece of a puzzle and, you know, bridge between consumers and available transportation options, because I kind of serve like a service link or 2-on-1 for them.
Do you actually interact with consumers?
Yes. Whoever calls me, whether it's one-on-one help or group help, or I do all kinds of things. So, and this slide talks about history and initiatives of the RCC, and we already gone through half of them, I'm not gonna address them individually, but I will let you know that in 2011, the RCC applied for federal transit administration funds through the New Hampshire Department of Transportation and got funds to use to create a volunteer driver program, because volunteer driver program was identified as one of the most efficient ways of moving people from point A to point B in that 2010 plan that I mentioned before. And also to use that money to expand services that are provided through senior centers. We have six senior centers that provide services. And also to create position of the regional mobility manager to do all this. And, and some money was used in 2016 to implement a taxi voucher program for people who are going through a community release program with the Merrimack County Department of Corrections. And that was done in collaboration with the Central New Hampshire Regional Planning Commission, D and B Taxi Company out of Concord, and Grand State Independent Living, just to help those folks to complete the requirements of the program, because in the town of Boscombe, they don't even have a taxi service, to be able to reintegrate into society. And basically, our goal, our goal is to continue improving these programs, maybe potentially implement additional taxi voucher program and update our plan and of course, increase membership at the RCC. Because, you know, everybody thinks of transportation as like maybe transportation providers' responsibility, but it's a whole community approach thing where, you know, not one person or one agency can do it together. So why do we do what we do? Why is it so important? It's basically to increase the quality of life and mobility of our residents. And the next couple of slides that you will see there talk about the greatest motivator behind this, which is aging. And these slides I adopted from the New Hampshire Center for Public Policy Studies. They talk about aging being everywhere nationwide. So that's becoming an increasing challenge, and especially here in New Hampshire. So the population, the projections are between 2015 and 2035, and people 65 years and over are gonna be at 66%. We are already on our way, because this is obviously 2017. And the largest subgroup of that population is at 85 years and over at 89% nationwide. And in New Hampshire, that's even more, the numbers are bigger because of the size and the type of demographics we have here. The next slide tells about how, how quickly we are gaining, how quickly we are aging, I should say, like almost by 2% every year we're, we're getting older. And the problem with, actually, if that's not a good enough reason to collaborate, there's more reasons here. I'm not gonna go through each of, each single of them. But the problem with that is that we don't, we do have some type of community transportation infrastructure here in, in New Hampshire and in our region, but that's not enough, obviously. And it's not gonna be enough when we look at these numbers that are presented here. So in your town, according to the 2010 census, you have already about 15% or 428 seniors in your town. So that number's probably a little bit bigger now, and it will most likely be growing. And the services that, that people in your town have available are through the volunteer driver program. And that program was that initiative of the Midstate RCC that was created in 2011. It has provided about 30,000 rides to this day, on average, 400, 500 rides a month. And it serves, like I said, people 60 years and over, people with disabilities. And it's Mondays through Fridays, 5:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. They provide, they need, people need to complete an application, and then once approved for the service, they can use it up to two rides a week. People that need dialysis, they can use it for three times a week. And they mostly take for medical grocery and banking. Reservations are required like three to five business days, but they don't count the day you call, they don't count the day of the appointment, so call a week ahead is the best rule. And so, to come to an end of this, what can you do to help? You can consider joining the RCC, work with us, and, you know, support transportation initiatives whenever possible. And also, maybe if you haven't already provided it, if you could provide a link to the Midstate RCC website somewhere in the corner of your website for your residents, just to, to this directory.
Yeah, I can get a few of these electronically.
Sure. On the, on the website, midstatercc.org, there is a PDF copy that you can just kind of link, that would be, you know, really appreciated.
Okay.
You're doing it for your residents, and, and your participation at this council is for your town and your residents. And, you know, it's greatly appreciated, because just having you there, like listed as a member, gives us more support as far as funding, getting funding and stuff like that. And I do wanna let you know that the Midstate RCC is the kind of lead RCC in the entire state, because we have implemented the most initiatives and we have the most members at our table and stuff like that.
Is this the website right here?
It's something to be proud of.
VM-GAP.org?
No, it's, it's this...
Mobility manager right there.
No, that's my email.
Oh, that's your email.
But what I'm asking you to do is like put a link to the midstatercc.org, 'cause there's a...
Yeah, okay.
A copy there.
Okay.
So that's all I had for you, unless you have questions for me.
I just have one odd question, but I think it's, I've seen taxi cabs and all that kind of stuff, but the thing is, in today's age, a lot of these internet providers like Uber are out there. Have they, have you reached out and talked to that company?
No, Uber is there, is here, but Uber is extremely expensive, more so than a cab.
Oh, really, okay.
Yeah. So you can actually go Google Uber in New Hampshire, and then they are required to give you a quote for your rides as they made it, by law. So it's like a ride from my office to Concord Hospital is like 30 something dollars, and taxi is much cheaper. But I will be listing them in the book in here, just because they're here.
Yeah, there's a, there's a couple other upstarts trying to get in, competitors to Uber too.
Right, right.
And it might be interesting to at least offer that. And this has been, I, voters have approached me about this, and many times, you know, there's no infrastructure here for transportation.
Yeah, so do you guys have a problem if I add this link?
I think it's a smart thing to do.
I'll put a little header with it, and then add...
What is, what is the cost to a town to join?
There's no cost.
No cost, there's no cost.
This is, this is all, you know, by the people for the people, and it's all the taxpayers' money, so I wanna...
Who's paying for the transportation?
Federal Transit Administration is paying at 80%. 20% required local match is needed.
From the state?
From, the state doesn't contribute any dollars towards community transportation.
So where's the 20% come from?
It's provided by the Community Action Program, and then they go out and raise funds.
And we contribute to the Community Action Program, that's one that we budget for every year.
Okay.
Yeah.
The Community Action Program has 73 different programs.
Yeah, they have a lot that they offer to the town. And it's local, and that's what's nice, it's really...
So I don't see any drawback to offer it to those residents?
No, absolutely not, people, and people are asking for this, and in fact, the master plan that kind of addresses too.
The other requirement is some, some form of participation.
If we join, yeah.
Do we want to put something on the website, asking people if they'd be interested in participating?
Okay, let's see, why not? No?
I mean, that, along with the link, and along with the volunteer driver program, that would be...
Yeah.
Participating, someone for the town? Because I'm asking the town to participate in this, okay, like a volunteer or somebody, that's fine. To represent you, it's fine.
We'll find out if there's anyone, unless...
Even as a regular citizen, everybody's welcome to participate. They can do the same, and you want to be participating.
Okay, that's, we'll do it, thank you.
You'll get back to me, thank you so much.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you so much. If you ever have questions, just let me know, okay?
Yep.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, we have one more question for you.
I'm not the type of person to go to meetings and all that, believe it or not. Can you just like volunteer to be able once a week to bring people from here to Concord for grocery shopping? Do you have to get involved with everything? Or can you just volunteer to be a ride?
Yes, we'll give her, I'll give her one of these.
I'm not sure I understand the question.
She wants to be a driver.
Oh, yes, thank you for bringing that up. If you, if anyone wants to become a driver, they can do so by contacting the part-time coordinator. And what she does, she has you fill out an application, and you have to go through a couple of background checks, including criminal and BEAS. And also, you have to go through training, and you have an option to be reimbursed 41 cents a mile if you like. And yes, you can provide rides to your friends or family or whoever needs it in town, definitely.
Do it.
Thank you for considering it.
One or two days a week?
I'm not a very...
We have about 55 registered drivers, but only about 22 provide rides on a monthly basis. And anyone in, who is residing in the Midstate RCC region is eligible to use the service. And they take you as far as Lebanon, Manchester, or Boston even for medical specialist appointments if needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so you want to have a copy of it?
No, I got it right here.
Yeah, you should still mind. No, it's all right, you keep, you keep it.
I already wrote on everything, it's in my notes.
We're good, we are good. All right, let's move on to the next one. We're gonna accept some money from the Department, federal money from the, for flood control money. This is in addition to the Clough State Park, this Clough flood zone area.
Yeah.
So this is additional money related to the flood. Lean, if you want to add a little bit more than I know about it?
Typically, we have a budget line for revenue from the flood control, ranges between 16,000 and 66,000 that we budget. And then we have one from the state level of, it's called miscellaneous pay, and it runs around $2,000 to $2,700. This is over and above this year, where it's coming from the federal level for flood control. So our flood control money is gonna exceed 70, around 71,000 this year for our tax rate setting number that the DRA will adjust, which will include this unanticipated 31,64...
The money goes directly against taxes, though.
Correct, yeah.
That's, it doesn't go to the general fund?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the funds in the amount of $3,164 from the Federal Department of the Interior flood control money per RSA 31,95-B3B. And also, I think that...
I don't think there's any discussion either, but any discussion at all?
No, I think that's...
Here and none, all in favor? Money's always good.
Yeah. Okay. Keep bringing it in, Lean.
All right, now we're gonna go to dumpster. Yeah, and at the last meeting, if you recall, we were, we dropped a thing about having some extra dumpsters online, and you wanted to clear them out and move them on to a better life. And we were ready to do that, but we had a citizen who basically made a recommendation that maybe other people in town might be interested. And I wanna just recognize Mert Mann tonight for making that recommendation, because we got a stack of bids to take it off. So, Mert, if you're listening, kudos to you.
Was that to get rid of them because they weren't useful or because they're underfoot? I'm just kidding.
Yeah, we're gonna start opening there, Bob, you got a little work here.
I'm giving all of you one.
Yeah, I've got to give another one, you got two. He's got three like you, I have one.
Hey, I did put the names of the vendors on the top, so if you give us the amount, we can still win.
We just want to, it was advertised for two 50-yard dumpsters. Okay. And the thing is, he's got a copy of the ad in there, the copy of the ad, he is given free delivery, so it as is, free, free delivery within 20 miles, over 20 miles, delivery fee.
What was the minimum?
With the way the ad was written, bids considered, must be a minimum of equal to value of scrap metal. Condition was fair, usable condition, size is 24 foot, 50 yard capacity, sold as is, free delivery within 20 miles. Over 20 miles, fee, delivery fee applies, local check, certified check or cash.
Lean, could you make me a copy of the actual ad, so I can put all that information?
I'll send it to you.
What we can do is have...
It's actually right, it's right there, that's what that was, that I just read.
Oh, okay.
Why don't you just read it off, and I'll read mine off? Okay?
Yeah.
And you'll have, all right, leave it off.
Right in there?
Yep.
These all pile again. All right. I'll start off, 'cause I got the first one, all right? J-Drive, Vandy Bogart, $1,050 for both dumpsters.
Okay.
I have the second one also, which is Russell in Ware, New Hampshire.
Yeah.
$2,000 for both dumpsters.
Okay.
And I have the last one on the list, which is Sunny D.
Yeah.
At 1250 for both dumpsters.
I have JP Carroll at 1,200 for two dumpsters.
What is it?
Well, uh...
12,000.
12, 24, 2,400 total.
I'm sorry, what was the number of the one you had?
2,400 total.
Oh, yes, so down the bottom, 2,400, okay. JP Carroll.
Okay, thank you. It was 2,400?
Yep.
And that one's not local, so we require either pickup or...
It's okay, so...
Did they say anything like that, whether they'd be picking it up?
Well, they, it was advertised, they're gonna have to pick it up. Delivery fee, if they bring it down to mass, they have to pay for it. That was as advertised.
Okay.
JP Carroll, huh?
You ready?
Yep.
Okay, Presby Construction is 2,100 for both of them, Bob?
For both of them, yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what was the...
Presby's 21.
21, okay, thank you.
And Bridgewater.
And I've got, what's this one here? This one here is Tenrod Farm.
Yeah.
Serveton?
That's 12,25 for the pier.
Okay.
In Bridgewater.
And let's just see, 12,25. This one here is my high one, this one's 2,022, and that's Bridgewater. This one's two thousand twenty-two and that's Bridgewater.
Two thousand twenty-two, okay.
Do all those bids, all want both of them?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So it looks like JP Carroll by margin. And let me read that one just to double check it.
Woody, the point of, to deliver it, how much, how much would you charge for delivery fee? Mileage, would you do by mileage?
I would be, I would take you guys if you want to determine that.
Yeah, but how many miles to the gallon, gasoline, correct?
Truck gets about four miles to the gallon.
Okay.
Plus you get the driver, I think, so I think we'll just let them come pick them up if they've.
Well, the thing is, I just want to be prepared, the thing is, pick them up or we'll, or deliver them with a charge because we just say we're going to.
Right. You just have to figure out how far it is from here to Lexington, Mass.
Yeah. Would you, could you come up with a proposal for that?
I could do that.
And I think.
They're in Lexington, Mass, Woody.
That's, that's, that's not sure, just directly west of Bob.
I'll, Lean sent you a copy of that, so you have their address anyway.
Yep.
Well, we can, we could talk to them anyway, see they might have.
Yeah, we'll talk to them.
Find out if they'll pick them up, otherwise you got to figure your time and the mileage.
Right.
Wear and tear on your vehicle.
And that would be twice round trip.
Right.
So it looks like Bridgewater sales was the second high.
Correct.
Um, I thought Presby had twenty-one hundred.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, Presby is, yeah.
Stand corrected, so one, two, and three.
Yeah, so there's one, two, and Bridgewater's three, right?
Yep, the rest of them were just far behind.
Okay.
All right, so I think we can take a motion on this one.
I'll make a motion that we call John P. Carroll and let him know that twenty-four hundred won the bid and see if he wants those to purchase and set up delivery if need be.
Yeah, I'll second the motion that, now see if, not purchase, tell him his bid was successful.
Yep.
And that, you know, is he willing to pick them up or should we figure a cost for delivery?
Yep, that can be, that can be determined between Woody and Lean, that's no problem. Whatever you think is appropriate between you two. Just to take into effect that you're, you're man on the job, wear and tear and fuel. And the thing is, and then if, if, if that doesn't, the alternate would be to accept the, the second bid. If he says he wants to back out of it, I mean, this is not binding.
Go on the next meeting after he doesn't.
Yeah.
So basically, as I said, made a motion to call JP Carroll that his bid of.
He was, his bid was successful.
Just put his bid is successful, got the amount.
Notify him that he was a successful bidder.
All right, here and no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all in favor.
Don't even look at it, I can't spell, I can't spell, thank God for spell check.
Bob seconded it.
Yeah, I already get that. I know what I'm trying to write, so I'll fix that at home. Spelling test in school, I always bring it back.
All right, I'm going to go on to the next subject.
Okay.
I'm going to give an update on the Overlook Drive Phase One update. And I'm going to refresh the boy's memory that we accepted the road with some conditions earlier this year in March. And we had issued, we had approved the issuance of one certificate of occupancy because the cistern wasn't in and there were some conditions that needed to be met prior to any further certificate of occupancies. This passed over the, since the last meeting, the building inspector came to me and essentially the, he had a dilemma because the fire chief has looked at the cistern that was installed and he was convinced it was, met all the specifications for a fire and safety. And so, and you should have a copy of that letter from, email from the fire chief.
Yep.
And they asked for a additional certificate of occupancy, but our town engineer had some issues with the placement of the cistern. They had it as written in a plan, but the site engineers had to shift it due to physical limitations on site. And that normally would require that the plan submitted be updated with an engineer's stamp on it prior to being fully complete. That was not done. But in the interest of moving forward, I advise the, the building inspector, I think we could probably just approve the one additional. And they had to come up and meet the conditions of updating the appropriate plans that the town engineer had a problem with.
To do an as-built.
Do, right, and bring the as-built, bring it into a planning thing. Well, the good news is that the engineering outfit for the Montaigne builders delivered an engineered plan today with an engineer's stamp on it and they have met the conditions that we have stipulated for them. And at this point, they are now seeking additional COAs. And at this point, I think with all the conditions met, we can start, we can make an approval tonight to issue COAs for the completed Phase One of their overlook subdivision.
Whose engineer is this?
Some of this. This, this, that's theirs.
That's theirs.
And some of the documentation is in front of you and I tried to go over, I don't want to simplify it too much, but I'm trying to make it understandable to everybody.
And so why do we need to make a decision?
Because it's in our, we accepted it with the conditions in March that only one house be built.
Until they met the following conditions.
Right, now the conditions have been met, I'd say we can withdraw the condition and we can start issuing permits, COA certificates.
It's actually related to certificate of occupancies. Not building permits, but closings of the final.
We set that condition up only as a temporary condition until they got their inspections and furthered their project along.
Right.
Now that they've done that, I don't think the board needs further action.
Uh, we could bless it, by doing it, by making a motion tonight, we bless it, make it official. Because up until, up until this point, we have not.
Do you guys have a copy of our original motion?
I do, it's right in front of you.
Yes, you read this entire planning board notice of decision at the time.
Yeah, I remember that.
On April.
Is this, got it?
Let's see, it's right here.
You'll take the long.
You said I had one in front of me?
You should have one.
I have one in front of me.
It looks like that, you can look at mine.
I'll look at yours.
So the good news is they've installed the cistern. It is passed muster with the fire chief. And they have updated the engineering plans to reflect on the field changes they made on site.
You have a set of those plans.
Right, and they are actually, and with an engineer's stamp.
Do you know, are we still holding the bond or?
Yes, the bond, the road is not completed.
So the full bond still?
The full bond.
We still have the full bond, yep.
And my experience working on the planning board, I've learned that most, I've learned that some builders in the past would come in and extra reduction in the bond. They have not to this date. And I anticipate them in the near future, they may do that because the road is substantially completed at this point for Phase One. How are we doing an understanding of this, gentlemen?
Pretty easy.
Okay. So I would like to read a motion and to move this thing forward that the certificates of occupancy shall be, where we said before, were limited to, as I said, partial roadway, designated, have full required, full frontage, improved plan, found in merit accounting deeds and conditions that we all had. However, the motion is to allow issuance of COs for the remaining qualified lots in Phase One, known as lots three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four in compliance of Phase One of Overlook Drive.
I'll second the motion.
Gentlemen, could I ask something?
We're in discussion, wait till we, still got a second, sir. All right, okay, we got a second. Now we're in discussion, sir, I'm going, I'm going to ask for your comments, sir. This is Ken Swayze, Planning Board Chairman.
Ken Swayze, Planning Board Chair.
Did anybody second that motion?
Yes, Bob.
Dave, one thing, you had a question about the authority or why you're doing this. Selectmen hold the, the control of the building permit process. The building inspector technically works for the select board. And right now, the approval that you see right there is for one CO.
Yep.
So you guys have got to either release or they sit there with half-built.
I thought it was the approval for one CO at their present state and when they updated their plan, it was going to be accepted at that point.
Now, that's the thing I want to bring up now. I, I noticed that this plan, I looked at the fine print, it's pretty hard to read. The design, referring to Kevin Leonard's three-page letter.
Yes.
Kevin Leonard's three-page letter. He's pretty specific, he wants them to correct the plan and he wants them to say it's, it's fine, which I believe they've done and I think you believe they've done.
So I see a letter here from their engineer.
Do you want to make it subject to Kevin Leonard accepting it? It appears that that's all correct. You don't have to, in my opinion.
Well, the thing is.
Just like, just holding the process up.
Right, and the thing is.
That's our engineer, Kevin Leonard?
Yes.
Yeah, but Le Montagne's paying for his hours and his work.
So subject to his review?
He hasn't seen the latest submittal that was delivered this afternoon.
Correct, the plans that you, that Mike has in front of him.
And you have a letter from this engineer for Mitchikor.
Yep.
Dated the thirtieth, which Kevin Leonard essentially was responding to. Most people would have found that letter to be satisfactory. Kevin Leonard did not. He sent a three-page letter in response to that letter of August thirtieth. On August thirty-one, Kevin sent a three-page letter suggesting that the plan be updated and that showing that it's.
I would think that it would be smart to subject it to his review.
I'm just saying that he probably would find that fine with him. So that would be, would that, Lean, could that be a phone call to you?
I think in his email response, he responded that he had received the engineered plans and assuming they complied with his three-page letter, that there should be no issues with him approving the plans.
I'm just saying, we're making that decision, not Kevin Leonard.
Right.
Do you follow what I'm saying?
Right, so subject to his review, I don't think it would hurt to add to that motion.
Review of his approval.
As amendment. But again, he's, all he's going to do is review, he's not going to put his stamp on it or anything like that. There's an engineer's stamp already on there. And basically, when you, an engineer's stamp means he's.
Hanging.
Hanging, yeah, culpable or shall I say, responsible for the engineering that's on here. Our town engineers can look at it, make recommendations up or down, but he's not responsible for it. The, the buck stops with this engineer here.
Yeah.
So the thing is, we, it might be prudent to just have him review it and we can make a motion subject to his review.
Yeah, I think that's wise.
Okay.
So you want to make a motion to allow this certificates?
You have to make an amendment.
Yeah, we're going to make an amendment that, to the motion that, motion as written, subject to review by our town engineer.
Okay.
Now, and the thing is.
Did you say it clear enough so it's on there because I didn't get it?
Yes, it's written, the actual proposal is written, so I have that through.
Do you need approval to review or just review?
Just review.
Okay.
Because he works for us. And the thing is, gentlemen, I'm going to tell you what happens sometimes. One engineer over here, one engineer over here, and they get into over nuances, or shall I say, some subtleties. They can get, and the thing is, and I don't want to hold something up when it's been, some engineer's already proved it. But again, he's our employee, so I want to, I value his input. And there's some other nuances, I don't want to go into it this time, this is not the appropriate time.
Let's just say it's been taken since April, March and April of this year.
So any, let's continue discussion, we're still in discussion phase. Any other, all right, we got to make an amendment to the motion. We're going to vote on the amendment to the motion.
Well, you need to second to the amendment.
Correct.
I'll second the amendment, that's our town, we're going to review it.
Okay, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so amendment is been approved.
Now the emotion.
Now the motion for the entire.
So it's going to be three motions total?
No, no.
No, no, no. You're voting on the amendment, the amendment passes, now you vote on the motion as amended.
Okay, so at the beginning, when you started your motion, you canceled that out, do the amendment first?
We took, in other words, the way it works in Robert's rules of orders, we make a motion. Thing is, the motion was amended, you have to vote on the acceptance of the amendment first. We did that, so the amendment, the subject.
It's on the floor.
It's on the floor.
It's accepted.
Accepted. Now we go back to the original motion as amended now, then we vote on the original motion as amended. And I'm going to hand that to you in writing, so you have that.
Okay, sorry, I got it all on there, I'll have to play it back by time to figure it out.
Any other further discussion on this motion? Nope. I would like to just make sure that it doesn't take four months to get an answer from Leonard.
He did say that when he returned tonight, that he would work on getting a response to us.
Okay.
So that was in his email today.
Okay, and in his review, we're not, basically, we just ask him for his review. So he can, he can say it's full of crap or it's not full of crap. If it's full of crap, it would say this is if it's flawed. If there's a major flaw here, we can readdress it. And I, I just realized, if we approve it tonight, with just his, with this, with just his review, if he finds a major flaw, we've approved the COAs.
Okay, add one more thing.
Please.
Another dimension is this, first of all, the planning board's normal requirement would have permitted seven certificates of occupancy to be issued before the requirement for fire suppression be introduced even into the subdivision.
Correct.
They could have gotten away with that. The one CO was a deal they made with the fire chief, it was not a planning board requirement. We would have ordinarily required a limit of seven and then prove that the cistern or any other method was instituted properly. You still have time. In other words, if you find that Kevin Leonard finds something wrong with it, you could just stop the process and you could, right now, say that they're entitled to seven anyway.
Okay.
They made a deal, but you guys are in charge of that, that portion of.
CO eight.
So in other words, after these seven are, are gone, we're still going to have to do another approval for the rest of them?
No, because we just, if Kevin Leonard and you guys bless that cistern, they, they get the twenty-two, twenty-two.
So we should do it by his reviewing and approval?
No, no, he doesn't approve.
Actually, as he's saying, when they get to the seven, if you find there's a flaw.
We stop.
You can stop progress going forward, cause corrected.
How are you stopping them?
No CO eight, no issue.
What you stop, right, you tell the building that you run, you ruled the building department. You could tell them, no more issuance of certificates of occupancy. They're entitled to all the building permits.
Yeah, it's true that the selectmen have to stop that, not the building department. It's true, the selectmen have to stop that.
Yes, you, you hold per strings of that developer in many cases.
Did you hear what he said though? He said they're entitled to all the building permits for the subdivision.
It's not building permits, it's certificate of occupancy.
It's two different phases. They're out there, they can build on a dirt road out there, they have been right from the beginning. But they can't occupy the premises.
Right.
Can't get the public in there until the road is accepted and approved by the select board.
Okay, that all makes sense.
And one of those conditions was no more than one certificate, certificate of occupancy until that cistern was approved.
And just.
It's really a complicated thing.
Yeah, and just, just for the record, Ken educated me on the, the beauty or the value of the cistern versus a retention pond, or not retention pond, but a.
Fire pond.
Fire pond. A fire pond requires significant more maintenance on part of the town. And the cistern, and the fire pond was probably physically not able to be put in there because of elevation and drainage problems. It would not, to maintain it would be very difficult. So they put an upgrade, the upgrade is a cistern.
They actually upgraded it.
Right, so we, Den Burton's got a win-win here.
Yeah.
So this, this is an FYI for everyone.
There's just a little bit of, some testing going on between the part of people involved.
Yeah, okay. So enough discussion, all in favor of the motion as amended?
Aye.
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 And I don't think we'll be done with overlook yet. It's a, it's a challenge. How did I explain that? Pretty straightforward. Ken, thank you for your backup.
Thanks for coming in tonight, Ken.
All right, continuing on. General town business. We have a couple things in here, just FYIs. Good news is, everyone, not everyone signed off on it, but the treatment of milfoil in Gorm Pond has been successful, and the extent of diving is going to be reduced significantly because the milfoil, the herbicide did a great job. And there'll probably be some money coming back to the town. We're talking about $4,000, give or take a little bit, but.
Now, was there a motion made at last year's meeting that any remaining money go into a fund for milfoil?
No, they're going to approach you for this next year. So they'll basically take these funds here, come before, at the end of the year, and approach the selectmen to
Yeah, oh, did you want to?
And come for the funds, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So that's good news coming. Next item. We have resignation of Roger at the, are we aware of that, Woody?
That's a transfer station.
Transfer station?
Yep.
So Bob, you got to do a better job hiring these people. He was working hard. It was not, it was basically, he founded.
More demanding than you expected.
I would like to make a recommendation that we repost that job on the town website.
Yes? Just, I've been talking with Roger. I'm not sure he's going to go through with that. I'm, we're working on some things.
The resignation, you mean?
Yes.
Okay.
I told him to think about it. Give me a little bit of time. We'll see what happens.
Now, Woody, I just want to say, he's coming forth to you with a resignation there?
Yes.
If you convince him to stay, you make sure that he can drive, because if, for some reason, you're out, we need a replacement driver in that position, and that's what we want to make sure to fit.
That was one of the major goals.
We don't want to leave that gap there.
Right. So. He's, when Leon and I spoke, I talked to, I had talked to him about the drive apart, and he is very uncomfortable. It doesn't feel that he can do it safely down the road. He's gone on his own. I had him do some driving with an empty load, with empty, just empty truck, over through, down into the ATV park area and up around Clifford Farms. If he get into too much trouble over there, and he just, he said he's uncomfortable driving.
So are you talking about him taking a different position down there, then?
Kind of staying where he would be able to, he's okay switching the blocks out. He's just not comfortable on the street with it.
That position that we're hiring for has to be on the road, so if you're not there, we're not leaning on other departments. So if he's going to pull out of that position, we should maybe look at offering him a non-supervisor position if he wants to stay. It's what my thought is. We want somebody that can take care of that department if you're out ill or for whatever reason, as a department head.
Right.
So I want to make sure that, you know, that's clear. That's, that's how we hired that job, and I would like it to.
If he, if he wanted to stay on it, it'd probably be at just a general work, entry-level person, doing, like a part-time, or like you normally have your part-time, not your part-time, that's the wrong word, doing general duties at the transfer station like anyone else.
But he does have some qualities that would help us out as far as some clerical stuff that would free me up from being in there doing.
But you realize that we're, we'd have to rely on a different department again if you were out.
Exactly, yeah.
I would like to alleviate that pressure on the town if we can. That was our whole.
You know, I understand that he's not comfortable driving, but does he have some management skills that you can utilize?
I think so.
Cause maybe we can work something that isn't quite the same. If he's going to be running something when you're not around, maybe we can work something out that's different than what he has, but, you know, because why we hired him was he had the CDL.
Exactly.
So there might be some conceptions that we can make around so that, you know, if you get someone that has a CDL license, they can be treated slightly differently than the regular group, or you have another person that can manage when you're not around.
We did have two rates, one management without CDL and one with, so there are two rates there.
And a couple things that I've gone ahead and done is, I spoke to some of the other boys. I have two other young gentlemen, and I approached them and said, hey, are you interested? And one of them's definitely interested in getting his license, and it's going to take a little time. It's not going to happen overnight. He's interested. The other one said he'll get back to me, but I have potential within us to do something, but it's just not going to happen overnight.
Should, should we advertise, the question is, should, I think as Dave said, should we advertise for a CDL driver?
I think you, you could advertise it, but just not to discourage anyone. I have a friend who runs, he's a, I don't want to call him a foreman anyways for a company. They're looking for CDL drivers. Their starting wage is 25 an hour with benefits, 401K and all that. They are having a hard time filling positions.
Yeah, this is a nice local job in town.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, but I've just thrown it out there that, you know, that's some of the things you're up against right now.
I would like to re-advertise it to give us some opportunities.
I think options are a good thing.
You're correct, though. I've seen a number of ads now of CDL drivers, and I got to tell you, you could be living in town, but money's the driver.
Money's the driver.
I would, I would tend to agree, but if you're, if you're taking a CDL driver, like for instance, if you're going on a trip to Boston every day, that's not very pleasurable. So you get somebody that might want to work a limited number of hours, that's maybe a retired or semi-retired person in the area, wants to work a certain amount of weeks, or days a week.
I mean, we could hire, you could hire someone just to do driving, nothing else.
Yeah, like I said, well, you know, I agree with Dave, the potential, you know, options are a good thing. We'll see what's out there.
I would like to advertise it like we did before.
For the position, or just the CDL driver?
No, I would like the whole position.
Position, okay.
And then if we only get CDL drivers, then we'll work that out as a board when we review and try and hire them.
That's all right. All right, thank you, Woody. All right, let's move on. Next item, inbox.
We got to put the sign back up out there, too, or?
Yes, I'll have it outside in a moment.
Okay. That worked pretty well. It got a lot of attention, I thought.
Are you going back, going to the mailbox now?
I still am in the mailbox, yes.
Still?
Yes.
When did you stack the mailbox?
With milfoil.
A milfoil, okay. This is a mailbox, okay.
I just got a, I just got a piece of correspondence, America Red Cross requesting money from the town of Dunbarton.
For 2018 budget?
Yeah.
Just for the board's information, we have never contributed. We currently budget a line for Capelone CAP, which is the same company that, this is an extension of.
I'd like to nominate Mike to go down and give blood for the town.
So the Community Action Program is the only one that we currently budget for, along with Salvation Army.
Bob, you don't want to second that one?
That was not a motion, Bob. I don't think any actions needed on that one. All right, we got a memo, just deny workman compensation benefits. This is a memo on one of our employees. Just to deny all benefits. That's our benefits, denial of compensation for injury. Just noted, just like that.
I'm sorry, could.
I'll give it.
Okay, thank you. It's ringing me.
Okay, did you, this is the letter Lean, this is on the bench. And that's in your, still an action item with you?
Yep.
Okay, I'll leave that in the inbox. This is on the, called the bench for the town common.
Oh, that's okay.
It's still an action item. It's still being worked by, by Dave Selectman. So it had been notified, but I want to hand him a official letter.
Okay.
All right, the other item in the inbox, I have a, a couple initials. We all have to initial here.
Yeah, this is a pre-approved, what is it, STEP, is that what the acronym is?
Yes.
Grant program that the chief had approached you with. There were a couple of sheets that were omitted in the application. They have decided to resubmit those two sheets to everyone who applied, just to make sure that everyone has.
Just your signatures needed on that, right, Mike?
No, I think all three of you had to.
Is it signature or just initials?
Initials and date somewhere.
Okay.
You guys have written all over the section there.
You're going to deliver that letter personally?
What is more paperwork than this? That was anticipated.
There's a green one in here, too. Is there anything particular about the green one?
Yeah, you have to initial that one as well.
Really? We, I think we, okay, we did before.
You have to initial the change lean, maybe, by the highlighted area?
No, that's in the folder. That was just reference that, I like to keep the whole thing, just the things on the outside.
That's a, call it, it's just a.
STEP.
STEP.
It's a safety grant from the police department.
Safety grant.
Proposed.
We've been.
We've been awarded the grant.
Correct.
It's an update to the, to the application.
There's one that's not labeled. It's on the second page after that one, Bob.
So it's three of them?
Oh, there's a few pages, missed one?
I think it's right in between the other two.
I think I got it.
Yeah, you did. I followed suit to you.
Okay.
So that's all, you basically want, just STEP, safety grant, update to the, to the application.
Correct.
Just that statement, okay.
Maybe additional signatures or something.
Yeah, we, application required additional signature and initials. Okay, good. We can pass out the leans if you, all right, that's the end of my.
This was in there, too.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I picked up on my mailbox.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. This is a request from the Dunbarton School Reunion Committee. They, they want to make a gift basket, and they're asking that, we have some of the items left over from the 250th celebration, T-shirts, sun catchers, and medallion. They would like to see if we could donate to the gift basket for the Dunbarton School Reunion Committee.
I don't have any problem with that. They're all the old, old 250 celebration stuff.
Yeah, we have them in the back closet.
They're just collecting dust.
You may as well, right? Donate it for raffle.
Everybody keeps those stored for so long that right there.
It's a request from that committee.
Yeah. It's a non, it's a non-town committee. It's just a community committee.
Want me to make a motion?
Yes, we should officialize it. Make it official.
Okay, you making a motion?
Yeah, and I'll second that.
I'll make a motion that we donate these 250th celebration T-shirts, sun catchers, medallions.
An appropriate amount to, to fill a basket.
Yeah, with a gift wrapped the basket.
Motion to donate?
Yeah. Leftover items from the 250th celebration to fill the gift basket.
250?
Yeah, 250.
Size basket.
We don't really care how big the basket is. I'm pretty sure there's nothing in there that will fit me.
Now you know what his motion is, now you could second that.
I'm trying to get it out, Dave. Bob, anything else?
Nope, nothing else.
I can second that.
So Dave made the motion, Mike, you second, right?
I do.
Then I'll leave that, Woody, see.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Have a comment again. Don, anything?
On the 250th, does the town own that, or is the historical society?
No, that was, all those were designed and fundraised. We started with initial budget, and then as we sold things throughout the 250th anniversary, we pulled that money back in to buy other merchandise. So the money was, the T-shirts were from fundraising.
Regenerated from the town.
Yeah, yeah, and it's just leftovers.
For December, when I have chili supper, if I could get a donation of that for a raffle basket.
Oh, yeah.
Put it requested.
Yeah.
I don't see why not.
Yeah, yeah, they're just sitting in the back room. We do sell them because we have them on display on a little board.
And they've been discounted, too, as I.
Yeah, they've been discounted, so it would be, yeah.
But you're not on the agenda tonight, so you have to come back.
I think I saw one of your tires going flat out. You better call Uber.
Woody, anything?
I didn't hear what Don, what was Don Larson saying? I never heard the beginning.
He's, he's.
Go ahead.
He's asking for a possible donation for his, down, reads across Dunbarton.
Oh.
For a.
Fundraiser.
Fundraiser.
Yeah.
And that's, again, another community group action that which would be, we're entertaining an idea.
For the old 250 closing.
Okay, gentlemen. I'm going to bring it to the selectmen.
I think we brought up all the other things I had on the other.
Okay, Bob?
No, I'm all set.
I just want to say, Lean, thanks for your notice about maybe not waiting until the quarterly meetings of the forestry committee. I will send out an email. I haven't had a chance yet, but I will send that out. I'm glad you noticed me.
Okay, Bob, go ahead.
Okay, I do have, do we know when the painter's coming to take care of the building?
I know, but I do drive by there, and I see his truck, so I'll make sure I stop in and ask him.
Yeah, I'm just curious, because we're going to start getting into, when you get towards October. Where is he now, Lean?
On Montalona at.
Oh, he's still over there?
He was last week, so I'll have to drive by that way.
And I want to give an update on the, we had some, one person come out and look at gutters for the library.
Oh, you did, okay.
And I met with him, and he has not given me a big deal.
I contacted three people.
Yeah, who came?
Quality.
I don't know. I scheduled two with him because I was on vacation last week. Only one showed up.
Quality or energy improvement?
Quality.
Quality came, okay.
Yeah, and he seemed like he was going to do it. I told him I'd like to have it by Tuesday this week, and still I don't have anything yet.
I have all their names and numbers on.
I do know it's a busy time of the year.
Yeah.
And just, Score has all the metal upstairs down now, so that's all down.
Yeah, yeah.
Was it picked up yet, Lean, or?
I don't know.
He's still out there.
Yesterday, I still saw it there.
And then they have been in touch with John Fisher once again, and they're supposed to be communicating with
Cohen.
The steel company, yeah.
Okay, good. General discussion on some of the main, some of the projects going, that would be for the minutes.
Okay.
I have nothing further. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. We don't have any, nothing, no need to go non-public, so I luckily have another motion to maybe adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second Bob's motion at 8:10. We cannot prefer what the dying.
All right, I'm sorry, Bob made the motion to adjourn at what time you have?
8:10.
8:10, and Dave, you second that?
Yeah.
No discussion?
No discussion. It's non-disc, non, it's non-degatable.
Can I have, in my packet, I'm missing the more current fire department letter.
Hey, I'd like to give these, you can have mine, but I'd like to also give you these, bad case, somebody comes in looking for a ride.
Yeah.
Can I just, what are, what are the T-shirts selling for now?
I want to say they're like $3 or $5 or.
What sizes do you have? Do you have something that will fit me?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, I want to buy one.
I just want to go in the non-public, find out why you weren't having a non-public.
Bob?